Before we move on, I'd like to say thanks to Commissioner Jatterly and Mayor Pro Tim Schuster for their outstanding work during the Ute Fire. If any of you guys were down there at the convention center, you ran into one of them or both of them, and if you did run into them, they handed you a box or something to move. So I want to appreciate, I want to show our appreciation to you guys for your outstanding work. It was much appreciated.
You guys rock.
Yeah, you guys do. Moving into the action items, the business part of the meeting. I believe we are there now. Item A, approval of the May 22nd, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes and the May 29th, 2018 special commission meeting minutes. Is that in your package? Have had time to review them? Any comments, questions, corrections?
Mayor, I had two small typos that I noticed. On item D, the 22nd, item D, there's just a typo in the first line. It should be done instead of D O N. That's a very small thing. Oh, sorry, item C.
Oh, I'm like.
Okay.
And then, and item S, under the Run for Rattone, Lori Booker and L A U R I E. That would be the, it's the fifth line, right after their website.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Very small.
Okay. Item 6, A, you'd like to, one should be five, special A, five, additional.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for catching this.
You do a great job with the minutes.
Yes, you do.
Not meant to be taking it long.
No, no, I appreciate a second set of eyes, so unfortunately, I didn't have Desiree proofread these for me, so thank you.
Motion to approve vote.
As amended?
As amended.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the meetings, the minutes from the meetings on May 22nd and special meeting on May 29th, as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, deliberate an act on street closure request for Run to Rattone event. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, the staff is working today with the organizers of Run to Rattone, and it's kind of a dynamic situation. We're still working on some paperwork here. What I've included in your packet is this colorful map, and it generally shows you the street closure that has been requested by the organizers of the event. They are in attendance here tonight. You can answer any of your questions, by the way, but I can tell you that in meeting with staff today, that includes police, fire and ambulance, and our public works department, we're in agreement with the proposal to close the streets as indicated here. The dates of the event would basically commence on noon, noon on Friday, that's July the 20th, July.
July 21st.
21st to 22nd, correct? And we would recommend that to you. Now, the form that you usually see in your packet there, we did not get that in the packet to you, but we do have a consensus on that. We would ask you to approve that road closure plan. As you see on the map for those dates, our crew will help out with that road closure, will monitor signage and provide barricades for that. We'll be engaged in that throughout that weekend in monitoring that. In addition, we did discuss that there will be alcohol served at the event, and the organizers are working on that process with the state alcohol people. That would come back to the commission for your final approval on that picnic license, so we would expect to see that in the next coming meetings. And additionally, the organizers are getting their certificate of insurance to us as far as those general liability issues. This is the second annual event for Run to Rattone. I think the gentleman here did a great job in organizing this last year. We have a pretty good comfort level with the event. We look for the event to grow and be, have more impact in Rattone, and so we're looking forward to it. You have our recommendation to proceed with an affirmative way on the road closures, and then we will be back to talk to you about those other issues.
All righty, thank you. Any comments, questions for Mr. Berry? For the gentlemen here? You never came in yet.
I have a motion at a second to approve the road closure request for the Rattone, Run to Rattone event. Any further discussion?
Do you want to?
I'd just like to, uh, thank you. We're getting to the end of having all this paperwork together, and this making this easy for us is great. We appreciate it, so.
You bet.
Thank you guys once again.
Good luck with the event.
We appreciate the event.
Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, public hearing, LI or L1 to C3 rezon request for property located at 200 East Hereford Avenue, formerly Morgan Portable Buildings. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, this is a proposory zoning from light industrial LI to a C3. That is a highway servicing district, commercial district, and the request is coming from the city of Rattone. It's gone through planning and zoning. They have a recommendation to rezone the property to the city commission. We heard about this a couple of meetings ago and set up the public hearing in accordance with the provisions of the ordinance in regard to zoning. I've worked with our zoning officer, Captain Herrera, here to get this far, as far as the rezoning. Next, we will have a resolution for action on the proposory zoning. And I would just state, in general, the site of Morgan Portable Buildings was zoned light industrial for that previous use of manufacture of portable buildings on the site. That activity ceased some years ago, and the site has been vacant since then. We have seen a developer locally begin to remove the industrial facilities there and has stated that his plan is to develop that in a commercial manner that would best fit C3. Now, his activities would be allowed under light industrial, so he is not requesting the rezon. This is an internal request that we feel is important to eliminate that spot zone of a light industrial that is surrounded by commercial zones. It's surrounded by both C3 and C4. There are very subtle differences between those two, but it's my recommendation to you to consider the C3 rezoning that has a better fit with the stated development plan. Stated development plan would be for hotel usage there, and that fits well within that general highway servicing district. I have talked to the current owner of the Morgan Portable Buildings, is not making the request, but is favorable to the rezoning. I would turn then to our city clerk or to our zoning officer to ask if they've received any other input in regard to the proposory zoning, and then, of course, mayor, this is a public hearing where we would like to hear from many affected parties.
All righty, thank you. So being that this is the public hearing portion of this, if there's anyone out in the audience that would like to comment on this, now would be your time. The mayor asking if it is going to impact the tax basis of the property, one of the property owners around.
So mayor, I can speculate on that, but the, we're talking about property taxes which are assessed and collected by the county. I believe that their process would be to do an evaluation of whatever the development is on the property and base any taxes on that valuation that they determine. I think it would only apply to this particular property, the Morgan Building property. It would not affect any surrounding properties. I would say that those valuations would generally not change. Now, if we see a general improvement in property values in Rattone, that could lead to an increase in property taxes, but an individual project, I would think, is not going to cause the county assessor to seriously consider increasing valuations across the board. So I'm not sure if the question is directed at future improvements to this property, or it would be to surrounding areas, or it would be the community in general. So there's a little speculation going into that answer.
Sure. Thank you, Captain. Any other comments from anyone? As seen none, we will move into item D, deliberate an act on Resolution 2018-34, a resolution amending official zoning map of the city of Rattone by changing a tract of land located at 200 East Hereford Avenue from LI to C. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, in your packet, you do have a map of the target property. You can see that that is two tracts of land that are contained in the Eagle Tail First subdivision. That is a subdivision that's recorded at the county. The developer is currently doing the demolition work on the Morgan Buildings Light Industrial Plant that's located there, and then we would expect to follow up with the commercial development. But as I previously stated, he can do the commercial development under either LI zoning or C3. That would be allowed. If approved by the commission tonight, and you would approve this by resolution, that is in accordance with the provisions of the ordinance, we would cause the zoning map to change to reflect C3. Generally, the area that you see surrounding this is zone C3 currently, so that would then eliminate spot zone that you see for the Morgan Industrial Plant. I can answer any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
I would make one statement, mayor, that this rezoning does not impact the DOT maintenance yard. That is not included in the proposory zoning.
Motion to approve?
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion at a second to approve Resolution Number 2018-34. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, public hearing number two here, MHS to R5 rezon request for property that abuts Arnold Street, Woodrow Avenue, and Market Street, blocks 17 through 20, block 16, the Fairview Edition, formerly the Mountain View Trailer Park. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, this is similar in that this is a request that was initiated by city of Rattone staff. It's initiated for the purpose of cleaning up a spot zone. The spot zone would be mobile home subdivision. I would point out that there is not a mobile home subdivision on the tract currently, and the previous use was actually a mobile home park, not conforming with the mobile home subdivision zoning. The surrounding area is generally R5. There is a commercial C4 district consisting of the old horse racetrack property, but the developed area is zoned R5. We are requesting the commission's consideration to change the zoning from mobile home subdivision to an R5 single-family residential tract, so that is similar to the previous one in that this is an internal request. You have the packet there again. I would ask Captain Herrera if he has any input from the public on this. We have the public hearing. Perhaps the city clerk has received some. I've received one bit of information on this. An adjacent property owner had told me in a personal meeting, a face-to-face meeting, that they were in favor of the rezoning.
All right. So this, again, is the public hearing on this rezoning proposal change? If there's anyone out in the audience that would like to address this, now would be your time to come forward.
My name is Mark Pena. I'm from Springer, New Mexico. Thank you for letting me speak to you all today. I'm the fellow that purchased the property, and I bought it about three months ago with the idea of maybe having some people that need to go to the hospital, elderly people. My mother's elderly, so I had her especially in mind. She's spent a lot of time at the nursing home and a lot of time at the hospital. And I've met an awful lot of people that have come from out of state, from cities far away, and they usually have to stay in these motels, and people who stay for a long-term time. And I'm also interested in maybe getting a senior-type environment there for just seniors that want to stay. And I was also considering maybe a retirement center of some kind, but that's only if the idea of this mobile home thing doesn't work. When I first went to go purchase this property from Eagle Built Properties, they told me it was zoned for mobile homes. And so before I was to purchase the property, I went into the fire department and just double-checked to make sure if it really was zoned for mobile homes, because it has thousands and thousands of dollars' worth of electric units set up, the plumbing's all set up. I understand that the previous owner did not manage the property very well, and he got some folks that weren't so nice in there, but it was because he was in poor health, and I guess he didn't have the right principles. But I have a picture of, let's see if I can find it, of, I intend to make this a very presentable place and a very, very nice place, something the neighbors would be happy about, and it would make their value go up in there, in the area. I've already done a lot of work there. There was tons and tons of people that had dumped their garbage there, piles everywhere. Well, I've eliminated about 50% of it, cut down a lot of the trees, and mowed all the grass. So I've done an awful lot of work there already, and already it's looking a thousand times better. I wanted to show a picture of what I, of a wall I intend to put up that the neighbors Take a look at that. That's what I have intent, intentions of putting up that wall, so that there's only five houses directly across the street from this property. And actually, there's about three properties. One, there's a vacant spot. And if that's what they saw, I think they would all be very pleased. And that's all I can say, that's all I can tell you, pretty much. Thank you. So you can all decide whatever it is you want to do that would be best for the city, you know, of course. But if you're, if I do this project and you're not pleased 100% with it, in a couple of years, I could just easily have everybody move out and turn this into a regular neighborhood. I think it's already overcrowded, to be honest with you. If you look at those homes, they're just jam-packed in there, and what I think would do would break up a little bit of the monotony of that neighborhood, make it a little less boring. But, well, anyway, thank you for letting me speak to you. That's all I have to say. Whatever you do is fine with me.
Any questions for Mr. Pena?
Yes, so let me just clarify. It's your intention then to create a senior living mobile home park?
That's what I, I'm aiming for, yes.
And mayor, while we have Mr. Pena present, I would like to reiterate that the present zoning is mobile home subdivision. It would not allow a mobile home park or an RV park, and I know there, that may be a little confusion here, but if we're talking a mobile home park, that would require a rezoning. The previous use was mobile home park, but that was a non-conforming use, which terminated some years ago. So actually, the mobile home park would not be allowed under the present zoning.
What is the difference between the subdivision? Is it permanent, is that what it is?
In a mobile home subdivision, the tract would be subdivided. Now, it is part of the Fairview Edition, so it is subdivided, but it could be further subdivided, where you typically would sell a tract of land to a property owner. There would be a mobile, a mobile home would be allowed to be set up, but it would not be a park situation where there would just be a short-term lease or a lease of a slot. This would actually be a purchase of a lot in the development. It's just the general difference between a park and a subdivision.
Don, did you have a question?
She asked it.
Okay. So you're looking for a mobile home park versus a subdivision? I mean, is that what you're trying to accomplish?
I think so, yes.
To where people would lease the land as opposed to purchase the space for their mobile home?
Yeah, to lease or rent a spot.
Right, okay.
And I want to add one more thing that might make you more pleased with what I have in mind. I don't intend for there to be any entrances from, on Woodrow Street, which is on the resident side, so no extra traffic would go down that street. They would all go towards the industrial building that's just west of the property. So they would come in from that little dirt road, or, and therefore, you wouldn't have any extra traffic. All they're going to see is a pretty wall.
So mayor, commission, I would point out another thing is that you do have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezon, but Mr. Pena did not get an opportunity to address the Planning and Zoning Commission, and this is an unusual type of situation where the county records, first of all, show the ownership as Eagle Built LLC, and I think probably don't reflect that transaction's taken place, and then, but Mr. Pena did not get an opportunity to present his plan to Planning and Zoning, so I think it somewhat colors that recommendation from P and Z, and you could consider the opportunity of sending it back to P and Z and, you know, evaluate the mobile home park concept, and then, as well as let the neighborhood weigh in on that. So that really did not take place.
Mr. Pena, when did you purchase the property?
It's been about three months.
Oh, okay, okay.
When I went into the fire department there, the fellow said that his uncle lived near there, and he thought, oh, this ought to be rezoned. So I said, okay. And so that's why I didn't go further with them, because he seemed against it right, right from the start. So he wanted me to pay $300, fill out a bunch of paperworks, and he already seemed adamantly against it, so I did not pursue any further. That's, that's why nothing got done.
Now, we can talk about it there, but ultimately, you know, Mr. Pena would have to request a rezoning to mobile home park, and I'm assuming that that's what he was talking about, is a fee to submit a rezoning request. I don't know that you'd have to do that right now, and the commission can, you know, again, do what you want to do on that. I would just point out that that was not discussed at P and Z, and there could be a new rezoning request submitted.
And what would be the zone that would meet his needs?
I believe it would be mobile home park. So we have not only a, do we have a zone for mobile home park, but we have an ordinance that applies to mobile home parks, and we would need to get all that information to Mr. Pena for his plan. There are requirements for the development of a mobile home park under a separate ordinance.
Right.
It's a long list of requirements, and I understand I have to go to Santa Fe and go through there, rig a merrow there, and throw in some money there also, so this is a, it's a steep uphill climb.
Right.
And I'm new to this kind of thing. I've driven Greyhound buses for 20 years, so I'm not real good at zoning in ordinances and real estate-type things, so this is all new to me.
Right.
And I think one thing that we want to avoid is, you know, catching anybody by surprise with a rezoning. We want to have an opportunity for everybody to have their input, so I think that's a consideration here in this situation.
This time that we could table this and give them the chance to go before the zoning board, the planning and zoning board. State your case, Mr. Pena.
I can try, I can do that.
And then at that point, they can give us the direction of what they are, and then we could look at that, at that time.
Thank you for all listening to me.
So Mr. Javas, you're going to make a motion to postpone this?
I would like to make a motion to postpone Resolution 2018-35.
I'll second. We have a motion to postpone Resolution 2018-35 and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I would just ask a question, is it, is a stipulation to send this back to Planning and Zoning for reconsideration?
Okay. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you for your input there, Mr. Berry. Item G, deliberate an act on RFP subcontract award for FY19, direct youth services for restorative justice program. Mr. Berry?
Treasurer Michael Ann Antonucci has been working on items under G and H, and mayor, I would like to pass it over to our treasurer to discuss both of these items.
Mayor Commission, in your packet is a memo that, excuse me, I apologize, I've had a cough for like a week. The memo in your packet for item G is for the direct youth services for restorative justice. So this year, under the CYFD grant for the juvenile justice program, they do the girls' circle, the boys' council, and restorative justice services. So this year, we did do two separate RFPs, and the restorative justice piece was done separately, and then on the next item, you'll see the girls' circle and the boys' council was done as another separate RFP. So our recommendation, we did have a committee of three members of the juvenile justice advisory board. I'm considered the procurement manager, so I do not sit on the selection committee, but I have compiled the results of the committee members grading of the three proposals that we did receive. And so we did receive Vaile Del Sol, Human Resource Development Associates, and Peace Through Education. And so the proposals were reviewed, reviewed, and evaluated by these three members, and it was determined by the cumulative scores that I compiled that Peace Through Education did score the highest, and that individual is Emma Green, and so she has experience in providing these services and working with the youth with restorative justice. and working with the youth with restorative justice. She was currently, this past year, working with Human Resource Development Associates and worked with the youth this year doing restorative justice. So our recommendation to you this evening is to go ahead and award a subcontract to Peace Through Education for fiscal year 19. Now, this does require, I've attached a copy of the subcontract agreement, which is similar to the one that we've done in the past for the other programs. This is subject to being sent to CYFD if approved this evening, and we have to further get their approval to subcontract any of the services, because we are the fiscal agent, the City of Raton is the fiscal agent, and we would be subcontracting out these services. This particular contract for the Restorative Justice piece is for $15,000, and that was the amount that was awarded from CYFD this year to provide those services.
Is there any questions for my plan? One thing that I'd like to point out, and it's a great program, it is a great program. In reading through the contract and that, you know, when the coordinator is actually hired by the City of Raton, now, Grant pays for that position. However, in discussions with Mr. Berry, should anything go wrong, the city is going to be held liable for any things. Given the climate in today's world, you know, I just wanted to point that out, that we are liable for the actions of the coordinator, correct, Mr. Berry?
Well, I think there's a legal question in that, but I would assume that, yeah, with our connection with the coordinator, we would have some color of liability. And, you know, generally, the city is brought in on a lot of different situations, and certainly I could see that happening here. And it's something that we always ask, what's our risk in a certain thing? So I would have to, you know, respond to the question by saying that, yeah, obviously, we would have some kind of liability risk.
And I just bring that up because it's just a bone to pick. They took away the administrative fees for handling this, and that was something that I'd pushed for years ago, and, you know, it takes Michael Ann time to do this, and we're not receiving any compensation for that any further. So I just wanted to make that point.
Well, and I do want to emphasize that this year, and we talked about this when you approved the CYFD grant a couple of months ago, Raton was one of the few entities that actually got an increase in our funding. And so we were warned very early on that most of these programs were going to see cuts. And so, you know, I really do want to commend our juvenile justice coordinator, because it's because of her efforts that this program did receive additional funding and the success of the programs here in Raton. And I know that Lindy was present when they had their state conference or state meeting here a couple of months ago. And so they are very impressed, and Raton is almost kind of a model for the other programs in the state. And so our juvenile justice coordinator, Danielle, and I do work very well together. It's really lessened the amount of work that I have to do, because she does do a lot. And so that's really helped me. When this program started, you know, years ago, it was a lot more work for me, but I do want to commend Danielle Archileta, because she does work very hard, and she's very passionate about these programs. And she does all of the, puts together the application and all of the reporting, and so there's a lot of work involved. So I just focus more on the financial end and making sure that we're in compliance with the grant, because this is federal funding, so there are a lot of stipulations.
And like I said, I think the programs are great. They've come a long ways, and Raton is recognized now as a model. I just want it not to be lost that we do have some responsibility here.
And I think they make that very clear in the contract. CYFD makes it very clear that us as the fiscal agent, even though we're subcontracting these services, you know, we ultimately are responsible, and we can't pass the responsibility on to another party. We will make sure that the parties that we contract with also have proper insurance to cover their activities, and we do have to provide a certificate of insurance as a condition of the grant, so CYFD is chugging that.
All right, thank you. So any other discussion?
I will move to approve the RFP subcontract award for fiscal year 19 Direct Youth Services for Restorative Justice Program.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve the RFP subcontract for fiscal year 19. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And item H, Michael Ann?
Once again, Mayor and Commissioner, a memo in your packet, and this RFP was for the Direct Youth Services for the Girls' Circle and the Boys' Council. And so we had three proposers submit for this one as well, and they were Vaidel Sol, Human Resource Development Associates, and the third one was Youth Heartline. And once again, we had the same three continuum advisory board members consisted of the committee that evaluated these. I did mention in the memo that Youth Heartline unfortunately was missing a mandatory form, and because of this, it deemed them a non-responsive proposer. So because of that, the only two proposals that were considered was Vaidel and Human Resource Development. And so the cumulative scores of the committee scored Human Resource Development Associates the highest. They are a current subcontractor for this fiscal year. And so based on the scoring and also their quality of service given this year, we're recommending that they be awarded a contract for FY19.
All righty.
And the amount of this contract for those services, as I said, the grant, we did receive more monies this year. The Girls' Circle program gets $60,000, and the Boys' Council, $49,500.
Any further questions for Michael Ann? Is there an entertaining motion?
I will move to go ahead and approve RFP subcontract award for FY19 Direct Youth Services for Girls' Circle and Boys' Council Programs.
I have a motion and a second to accept the, to award the contract for fiscal year 19 Direct Youth Services for Girls' Circle and Boys' Council Programs. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Item I, deliberate enact on bid award for solid waste landfill disposal tipping fees. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, let me preface our action on I and J by stating that both of these items are consideration of a bid award in regard to disposal of municipal solid waste. We do have a transfer station in Raton where we would take our local route trucks or collection trucks, transfer that to an over-the-road trailer, and then transport solid waste to a, to a landfill. And we have several options on landfills in the area. But recently, in recent years, we have transported to a waste management landfill that's located north of Pueblo called the Midway Landfill. So we've had a contract for the transportation of that. That's where a vendor would pull a trailer owned by the City of Raton to the landfill, empty the trailer, and pull the trailer back. We do that on a daily basis. We generate close to 20 tons of municipal solid waste five days a week, Monday through Friday. So we typically make that trip Monday through Friday. So that would be the transportation part. And then, when you get to the landfill, the City of Raton would be charged tipping fees. That's the cost of disposal of municipal solid waste at the landfill. And that is done by the weight that we deliver every day. So we've operated that way for more than four years, and I'd like to call on the Public Works Director, Jason Phillips, to give you greater detail on both of these items, but I wanted to preface his presentation to the commission. Jason?
Mayor, Commissioner, much like Mr. Berry explained, our first award is for the tipping fee contract. That's the amount that we pay per ton at the landfill. We did a silt bid request for this, advertised it as required by state statute, advertised it on our website, listed in our vendor registry, yet we still only received one bid. The bid received was from Waste Management's Midway Landfill, and it is the current provider of these services. The amount bid, as you can see, is 48 cents per ton more than our previous agreement, and that agreement was about four years old. And this current agreement had provisions for annual renewals up to four years, total contract length. And this price, the 1646 per ton establishes the baseline price. The U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics compiles a CPI, much like the Consumer Price Index, but it is a subsection for water, sewer, and trash. So the additional renewals are factored in with the CPI. So the, say the CPI is 2% in the next year, we would add that onto the base contract. That would become the next rate. It generally has averaged about 1.8% over the last 10 years. So not big price increases, but it does allow us to do a multi-year term where people aren't real comfortable with fixing a price for a four-year term and not have to go out to bid so often. So we have a price increase of the 48 cents per ton. We on, in general, have about 5,000 tons a year, so the price increase is about $2,400 per year. Pretty marginal price increase, still really a great tipping fee rate, lower than I anticipated at the time bid. And so far, we have been extremely pleased with the service of Midway Landfill. It is open on a regular basis, which matters. Wind tends to close landfills, and we do not have a transfer facility able to store solid waste, so it's important that that load goes out every day. In addition to this contract, we required a secondary option in the event that something happens at the primary location. The bidder was required to provide an alternate disposal location at the same rate, and so they have, they have provided an alternate disposal location in Colorado Springs at the same tipping fee in the event something were to happen at Midway Landfill. So I would recommend approval of the contract to Waste Management for these services, and would stand for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Phillips? And Mr. Berry?
I make a motion to accept the RAID grant. I'd like to put a word in the horn.
Item I?
Approve an act on bid award for solid waste landfill disposal tipping fee.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the award. Is there any further discussion?
Did I have a question? Does that affect rate payers at all? I mean, I know this is a small, small amount. Do we see any issue with that?
Commissioner Charlie, no, it does not. Our rates are fixed by ordinance, so a residential household paying $25.60 currently, those rates are just absorbed within our solid waste budget. Nothing is passed along through to a rate payer.
Any further questions? All right, you all in favor? Vote by the sign of aye. Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Item J, deliberate enact on bid award for transportation of municipal solid waste. Mr. Berry?
I'll look over to Mr. Phillips, Mayor.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is part two of the equation it takes to get trapped to the receiving landfill. The great part about this is with lower tipping fees and higher transportation, local firms generally benefit from our ability to transport solid waste. In this solicitation, we had two bidders, Arthur Roloff and BTU. BTU has held this contract for the previous four years and have done a great job for us in that, and I would like to thank them for it. This is a strictly price arrangement. We did set up the transportation bid to the three landfills that we anticipated may bid it, but since only Midway Landfill actually bid tipping fees, they were the determining factor. So it was the lowest price from each firm to Midway Landfill. And as you can see in the recommendation for award, we are currently looking at a low bidder of Arthur Roloff at $375 per load. BTU was at $409 per load, and our previous price for this, BTU's current contract, is at $376 per load. So this actually reduces by a marginal amount, $275 over the course of a year. As I say, you know, we've had great success with BTU. We can only anticipate that Mr. Arthur, once this contract would be awarded to him, would provide the same service. The expectation is that you provide a truck fleet and driver capable of delivering one load per day every Monday through Friday, and Mr. Arthur is aware of the requirements as outlined in the bid proposal form. At this point, based upon price, I would recommend award of this contract to Arthur Roloff. It is another multi-year possibility award of up to four years. This contract differs in the sense that it establishes the space price of $375 per load, and renewals would be at that price. But to protect the city and the contractor, this contract has a fuel escalation and de-escalation clause. So on the day that bids are received, we get the price of number two diesel in Raton at three locations. That establishes the baseline. If it varies from that over, I want to say, 20% in either direction, there is a negotiation to take place that could increase or decrease that. What it does for a bidder is takes the number one variable out of play, which is the price of diesel fuel. You really can't look at a year or four years in a volatile petroleum market. But to this point, over the four years that we've had a similar contract, the fuel escalation, de-escalation clause has never been enacted. So with that said, I would recommend award of this contract to Arthur Roloff.
I have a recommendation, recommendation to award this contract? Is there any further discussion? Or I guess I would entertain a motion first. How about that? We have a motion and a second to accept the award, the bid award. And now, is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Jason. And you're still there. Item K, deliberate enact on acceptance of raid grant with the New Mexico Environment Department. Mr. Berry?
Mayor, Commissioner, we have been applying for some grant money, and we have a couple of those things to report back to the commission. We'll start with item K, a raid grant that is a Recycling and Illegal Dumping Act grant through the New Mexico Environment Department. Mr. Phillips here had submitted that grant. We were notified that we were successful in obtaining funding through that grant, and I'm going to have Jason give you the details on that now.
Mayor, Commissioner, as you probably remember, we spent the early part of 2018 abating the mountain of tires at the old transfer station, and that was done largely with city monies. The remaining tires consist of approximately 2,000 semi-truck tires, 100 skid steer-sized tires, and 150 OTR tires, which is the fancy way of saying they are giant tires. They are the most expensive tires to get rid of. Some of the tires out there could be as much as $275 a piece to dispose of, and in the past, they were probably accepted for no dollars. So we applied for funding for these large tire recycling program. We were awarded the full amount requested of $25,000 with $0 in matching funds required. So it's 100% grant agreement. The anticipation is with approval this evening, the NMED actually makes you build your own grant agreement and then send it to them. So with approval tonight, we will construct the grant agreement, send it to them for their approval, and they'll send it back. But between July 1 of this year and July 1 of next year, it would be anticipated that we'd expend all $25,000. It should cover every tire we have on the ground. It may in fact result in the turning back of some grant monies, because it's tough to get a feel of what they cost, but I, my gut is that the $25,000 is more than enough to do what we've got proposed, and I would recommend accepting free money at any point.
I'd like that recommendation.
Yeah, absolutely. Is there any questions for Mr. Phillips?
I'll make a motion to accept the construction and submission of the raid grant with the New Mexico Environment Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the construction of the raid grant with the Environmental Department. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Item L, deliberate and act on Resolution 2018-36, Acceptance of NMDOT Cooperative Agreement SP-41958 and Pledge of Matching Funds. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, you'll remember that back in February, we had asked the commission to approve resolutions to submit applications for the NMDOT Cooperative Agreement Program and for the municipal arterial program. We were informed that our application for municipal arterial program was not accepted, but we were fully funded on our application for the cooperative agreement program. So we do have a grant agreement that provides a total of $100,000 in project funds. That is a 25% match from City of Raton, so DOT would provide $75,000, City of Raton would provide $25,000. At the time that we submitted the application, we had anticipated doing utility work on a portion of Brilliant Street and Hart Avenue. And the plan was to follow up that utility work with pavement rehabilitation. So the $100,000, again, would be designated to those portions of Brilliant and Hart that are disturbed by utility work. Raton Water Works has proceeded with the design of that utility work. It would be the replacement of a steel water line that's located in that area that is problematic currently. So we would replace that with a brand-new PVC line, do some patching on the streets, and then we would anticipate it in the summer of 19, we would come back with these street improvements. What we're asking for the commission to do currently is consider approval of the co-op agreement as stated by the mayor, and also commit to the pledge of matching funds in the amount of $25,000. I would state that the DOT's maximum share is 75,000, and the city's minimum share is 25,000. If there was a cost overrun, the city would fund the cost overrun.
Any other questions for Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-36, the Cooperative Agreement, SP-4-2018, Pledge of Matching Funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, second to adopt Resolution 2018-36, the Cooperative Agreement. Is there any further question? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate and act on Resolution 2018-37, Fiscal Year 18 Budget Adjustment Number 15. Mike Lynn?
Mayor Commission, in your packet this evening, we have Budget Adjustment Number 15, primarily just line item adjustments. The fire chief did reach out to me last week. There is kind of a tremendous amount of overtime attributed to the youth park fire. A lot of it will, or most of it will be reimbursed through the state forestry. We probably won't see that until the next fiscal year, so I've done some line item adjustments within the fire department so that we can cover those expenses pending reimbursement. Unless there's any questions, I would recommend approval of Resolution 2018-37, Adjustment Number 15.
I will make that motion to approve Budget Adjustment 2018-37, FY 18 Budget Adjustment Number 15.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-37, Fiscal Year 18 Budget Adjustment Number 15. Any further discussion? Mike Lynn, can we have roll call votes on that one, please?
Mayor Lieutenant Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffetz?
Yes.
And Mayor Sacata?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Item M, deliberate and act on introduction of ordinance, repeating ordinance number 666, 1% supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax effective January 1, 2019. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commission, we have several items on the agenda here that will relate to the grocery receipts tax that has been in place in the city for about, close to 40 years, that is specific to funding water system improvements. We will be sunsetting that increment, and at the first of the year, a new increment will take place. We'll also talk about the use of some of those funds for filter plant improvements. And so we do have General Manager of Raton Water Works, Dan Campbell, on hand, who is chomping at the bit to address the commission. And in regard to the repeal of ordinance number 666, also our city clerk, Michael Antonucci, has worked with Mr. Campbell as far as following the steps necessary to accomplish that, and we'll talk about the implementation of a new 3/4% supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax that will also be effective January 1, 2019.
Mayor Commission, with the city clerk treasurer, this is the repeal of 666. For my 27 years personally, I just knew 666 was off the books, but just repeal that ordinance. And it will actually end, the end of 2018, December 31st, actually, at that same point is when the bonding of that project which built the Cimarron Pipeline, which started in 1982, when this was passed, will then be paid off. At that point, as the public have voted overwhelmingly, that we will continue forward with our water projects, and it will actually reduce, as of January 1, to 3/4% tax. But this is actually the final action on this one would be introducing this ordinance to repeal that tax the end of this year. And at that point, I guess that the treasurer could give us better guidance.
So this ordinance, the language is pretty basic. It follows the guidance out of Tax and Revenues Handbook on adopting or repealing grocery receipts taxes. As Dan stated, the new tax, the 3/4% will go into effect January 1. We've already sent that information to Tax and Revenue, so it will be scheduled to go into effect January 1. So our next action is to simply introduce this ordinance tonight. I will need to, if it is approved for introduction, then go ahead with a legal notice for an actual date, probably the first meeting in July, that we would take action on this. And so, once we've posted the proper notice and taken action on it, then I would send it to Tax and Revenue. And so as long as we get it done by September 30th, all those actions go into effect as of January 1. So we want to kind of take the necessary steps to do this. As Dan said, the bonds will be paid off in December, and so this is essentially a repeal of this tax which was adopted July 1, 1981, and it was ordinance 666.
Okay, so this is, we will be acting on the introduction of the ordinance repealing the ordinance tonight, or not acting on the ordinance itself. This is the introduction.
So I believe it's our first meeting in July. Is it? I wanted to make sure I got that. So July 10th would be the date that I would publish in our legal notice, a notice of adoption, public hearing and adoption for July 10th.
Okay, well, it's going to be a mouthful, but I will move to approve the introduction of ordinance, repealing ordinance number 666, 1% supplemental municipal grocery receipts tax effective January 1, 2019. Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to accept the introduction of the ordinance repealing the ordinance, number 666, 1% supplemental grocery receipts tax effective January 1, 2019. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Berry, I'd like to make a motion to oppose a tipping fee break.
Okay, we will take a, three-minute recess according to Commissioner Chaffetz. No order here. Item O, deliberate and act on Resolution 2018-38, the Filter Plant Project Grant Resolution. Mr. Campbell?
The documents you have before you, I did hand out the letter of conditions and actually the obligation of funds that were done in April of last year. This process through USDA rural development funding began in March of 2016. Then we actually had the agreement that we obligated the funds to complete the engineering and design in March, I mean, in April of 2017. The grant resolution that you have in front of you actually addresses those terms that are in that document you've got, but this point is a project that's $2,583,000. It's a filter plant, of which $1,754,000 is loan, but the grant funding that's in this first document, 32.09% of the project is from the USDA rural development, $829,000 toward this project. As you'll read through the documents, if there's any question, the second page on D, it does address that we provide service to everybody in the area. That date you're looking at on there on 6/28/2016, in case somebody had questions on that, that is actually the last rate increase ordinance that actually went through this, because what that says is it did address rural areas, urban customers, commercial, and residential to where all the public is served, let's say, within our service area. And I guess at that point, I would answer any questions. This is a document that of course states everything we have to comply with, which we are bound by, by the New Mexico Environment Department as a provider of safe drinking water. But at the same time, it does do all of that. It does say that the property will continue to be used by the City of Raton, provide drinking water to its citizens. It is a 1946 filter plant site. I would anticipate that would change anytime soon, but this actually does obligate that facility to that use as we move forward. And at this point, I would stand for any questions, but this first document is the grant portion of that, which is what makes this worth going through the efforts because it is federal funding. This has been a lengthy process. It's the same process we did use on the wastewater treatment plant approximately 10 years ago, almost 12 years ago now. Because as a rural community under 10,000, we can get that funding assistance, and at that point, it was a lot larger project, but we did go through the funding efforts at that point, and at the same one, we're doing this. As this commission seemed to hear before, it is quite a bit of documentation. As Mr. Berry's been aware, he's been in a lot of the meetings, but this is coming really close to the end of this, where we can actually go out to bid and look at a construction start. So at this point, I would take any questions, but I would definitely recommend approval of this resolution for the grant portion of this project.
Any questions for Mr. Campbell?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-38, Filter Plant Project Grant Resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-38, Filter Plant Project Grant Resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item P, Mr. Campbell, deliberate and act on Resolution 2018-39, Filter Plant Project Loan Resolution.
This is a, the second portion of this is actually, is another federal document that actually is a resolution that's for the loan portion of this. This is just the first of many steps as we go through the loan process, but as you can see, it is the same amount that we agreed to back in April. It continues as what we've bound before. This is actually going to continue at the 2% amount that's what will be adopted in our ordinance, because those funds are obligated from that time a little over a year ago. But as you can see in here, even on the second page, it does address that it also includes a grant that, and in the federal process, of course, loan funds will be expended first in any grant funds that are over the amount of the project or return. In the case that a project comes in under, bid is very rare anyway. But at the same time, I would recommend approval of the loan process so we can move forward with this project.
Any questions for Mr. Campbell?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-39, Filter Plant Project Loan Resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2018-39, Filter Plant Project Loan Resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, Mr. Campbell, it's my understanding items Q and R are going to, are a request to be postponed, but would you like to deliberate at all on those?
Yes, I would. At this point, this has been a lengthy process to explain what is actually going on. We had approximately a one-hour meeting with our bonding attorney and several individuals from rural development this morning with Geneva and I. What is going to happen is because of the change in regulations that now exist to where we do have to provide interim financing, the federal government does no longer, no longer does that over any project over $500,000. So we will actually have to have interim financing ordinance that it's approved. The first ordinance in your packet that was on here that actually is for the loan amount, as it does state, it does stay at the 2% amount. It is a 40-year term. It can be prepaid. We usually anticipate prepaid because most facilities have a life of 30 years. We're actually already in the process of working on that with the wastewater treatment plant, but all USDA funding is at 40 years. That same commitment that we got in April of last year does hold at the 2%, but this ordinance that was before you now will actually be probably as long as six to nine months from now as we get near the end of construction or well into construction, because the first ordinance we'll bring, which we would actually postpone both of these, but the interim financing ordinance would be hopefully at your next meeting is the goal we're having, if not the following one, but we would postpone to that point. That would just be explaining anytime we're going to borrow money from the public's funds and actually commit rates to that, even if it's on an interim financing basis, which essentially would be like the financing when you're constructing a home. It's almost like a line of credit that we will borrow from a bank during construction until we complete that process. Then it goes to the bonds at the end of that process, the way it's done. The bank that is typically used by USDA, I put the handout that actually, just a quick one that went to the mayor, is actually states the terms of it from COBANK. That is, as you see several other literatures, it does a lot of the financing in this area. What you'll see on that one is that's at about a three, it is a 3.97, but it's a variable rate interest that's above 2% above the monthly LIBOR, resetting weekly, which is the London Interbank Offered Rate, which is a federal document which would monitor the rates in this area. That is a construction loan, can be up to 36 months. This project's anticipated to be 12 to 18 months at the most. We're actually hoping to complete it in one year, this construction project. This would only be in compliance with the last item on there, the letter of conditions, the letter of intent to meet conditions, and the request to obligate funds, which is what's before you that we did April of last year. We would come back with an ordinance and put this before you to move forward with this process. At the same time as our discussion, we will move forward and anticipate in mid-July putting this project out to bid and run concurrent processes to where we can try to get this project begun, because we have got six comments in from the Environment Department on our plans. We've had a call with them and responded. We anticipate complete approval of the documents to go to bid within the next 10 days to two weeks. So we would actually put this out to bid because the ordinance process, this is the size of this project, it will be a six-week bid time at least, so we won't open bids till sometime in mid-September. So we would actually go through the process with the commission on the interim financing. At that time, all of these documents do have to be approved by the Office of General Counsel. We're working on that right now. That's what some of the delay is, it goes all the way to Washington. But with COBANK as their normal bank, this would just be a, probably an 18-month financing bridge, and then we would close. But at the same time, all the agreement, we have obligated the funds, it would be at that same interest rate that we've obligated it at. So at this point, those two items will be postponed, anticipate to be back hopefully within the next two weeks to four weeks to be back before the commission on the interim financing, and then at a later date on the final financing. It will address in the interim that with that, you're agreeing in that ordinance to obligate. to obligate rates toward that process through that bank, but also that we would do the final financing with the bonding ordinance, assuming we're going to approve it. The only way that 2% will change is if interest rates were to lower. It can go lower, but I'm not sure that's going to happen in the current economy, but that's a possibility that could happen. And at that point, I recommend we postpone those other two items that we'll be back to move forward with this. This does begin it with these two resolutions, and I would stand for any questions. This has been a lengthy process, I'm sure, but it's a way of...
It has. Any questions for Mr. Campbell? Then we would entertain a motion to postpone items Q and R.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone items Q and R. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Hey, Mr. Berry, it's my understanding items S, T, U and V are also up for postponement. Would you like to comment on that, please?
Mayor and Commissioner, items under S and T are documents that have been submitted to the City of Raton from BNSF Railway. They are the conveyance contract, which would convey the Raton Train Depot from BNSF to the City of Raton, and then also a lease agreement in which City of Raton would lease back a portion of the building to BNSF Railway. That would be for the purpose of conducting their signal operations and for certain telecommunications equipment that they have in the building. We have talked about both of these documents for a number of years. And recently, BNSF has revised those documents. So previously, the City Commission did approve this conveyance contract and the lease agreement. However, that was not executed by BNSF. And now BNSF has made revisions to the commission, brought it back to the Raton City Commission for your consideration. But what I want to talk about is the documents listed under U and V. I'll talk about those. U is a deed of easement between the City of Raton and Amtrak. V is a Raton Station Lease Agreement between the City of Raton and Amtrak. And under these documents, if the City of Raton gained ownership of the train depot, we would agree that the primary use of the depot is as, for passenger rail purposes, supplied by Amtrak. However, Mayor and Commissioner, there are some legal language in the agreements that I don't really feel comfortable with. I've asked city attorney to review those agreements. I've also asked self-insurers group to review insurance requirements under those agreements. And I do not have our responses finalized yet in order to bring these back to the commission. I would anticipate that at the next meeting, we will have that legal review and the insurance review done and bring these back to the commission. I would recommend to the commission that we postpone action on all four documents. And we will, there is one issue in the BNSF agreements that we would like to address regarding utilities. So that's my recommendation, is to postpone all four documents.
I'll make a motion to approve the postponement of items S, T, U and V.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone items S, T, U and V. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item W, deliberate enact on resolution 2018-40, strict enforcement of City of Raton fireworks regulations per existing city ordinance number 884, adopted 8/11/98. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we have drafted this resolution in regard to a concern that we have dry conditions after an extensive drought. We have had a major wildfire in the area. And we've seen some of our neighbors put out of their homes for a time with the Yoot Park Fire. So a lot of concern about the potential of risk of fire. In this resolution, we are trying to remind the public that we do have an ordinance in place. It's ordinance number 884. That's available to view online, either at the city website or at AmericanLegal.com. And the ordinance regulates the type of fireworks that can be sold or purchased inside the City of Raton or used, and also the manner of use of those fireworks. In the preparation of this resolution, I have consulted with an attorney at New Mexico Municipal League, and he reminds us, same conversation that we've had in previous years, that a local agency does not have the authority to ban fireworks, but they can regulate the type of fireworks and the usage of those fireworks. And we do do that under city ordinance 884. That ordinance describes the type of fireworks that are legal for sale or for use in Raton and the type of fireworks that are not legal for sale or for use in Raton. So generally, fireworks that would go high in the air and may land in an unintended area, those are generally not legal. Fireworks that would generally go more than six feet off the ground, those that operate close to the ground generally are legal. We do encourage people to use those responsibly in a paved area or a place where there's not flammable material around, especially dry grass, trees, brush, vegetation, and also have a water source available. So fireworks will be available in Raton. Under the ordinance, the City of Raton personnel will inspect those vendors to make sure that the fireworks offered are legal. Under this ordinance, we would, under the resolution that you have, 2018-40, we would remind the public that we will strictly enforce the terms of that ordinance during this 4th of July season, given the elevated risk of a fire. So typically, we would see the use of some illegal fireworks around town. Sometimes those fireworks are purchased somewhere else and brought into Raton. We're trying to remind the public that we do have a description online under this ordinance of what is allowable, and we will strictly enforce the terms of that ordinance. And we will cite people that violate that, either through the purchase of fireworks or through the sale of fireworks. So it is, Resolution 2018-40 is a public education tool and a reminder and a request to the public to act responsibly when using the fireworks. Now, I would only add to my discussion here to the commission that the City of Raton does offer a public display on the 4th of July. It's a great display. It's very strongly supported by the public. We will plan to conduct that display. And so if people could wait to watch the public display, you don't necessarily have to go out there in the community and light fireworks and take that risk that goes with the lighting of fireworks.
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate what Mr. Berry said. We do not have the authority to ban fireworks. I've been asked by several citizens to do that this year because of conditions, but we do not have that authority. So is there any other discussion or questions for Mr. Berry?
No, it's, I think it's as good as it gets.
2018-40, strict enforcement of City of Raton fireworks per existing city ordinance number 884, adopted 8/11/98.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2018-40, enforcement of fireworks. Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Berry for acting on this. I know that we had, all of us have been pushed by people who want that banned and we're not able to do it, but this is one of the strongest things we can do.
Yes.
And I'm confident the city will be supporting that. So thank you.
And ask citizens to, you know, voluntarily be careful with their fireworks.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item X, deliberate enact on resolution 2018-41, approval of solid waste transfer station loan escrow agreement. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we had taken an earlier step in regard to this loan and defeasance of the remaining outstanding balance of the loan. This would be a subsequent step in regard to the escrow amount in the agreement on that. And I would like to call on our treasurer, Michael Ann Antinucci, about the specifics of the action.
Okay. Mayor and Commissioner, I've given you copies of the resolution that was drafted by the legal counsel Sutton Thayer. They are working with New Mexico Finance Authority to prepare these documents for us. So the action this evening is this resolution, and it's for the defeasance of our transfer station loan that was in the amount of $1,036,000. I think that's a typo. It should just be $400,000. So I'll have them fix that. And that was a loan that we did take out in May of 2013. And so this is pretty much the final steps. It does state that the remaining proceeds of that loan were $534,10483. And so in working with, and I forget the name of the bank, I apologize. I don't know if it's stated in here. We would only be executing the resolution this evening, and then I would send a signed resolution to them, and then they would finish completion of the escrow agreement between New Mexico Finance Authority S and the lending institution that's involved in this process as well. I'm not sure what else we have in here. So as we reported to you at a previous meeting, these funds were being put towards the balance of the debt service. And so that loan still will follow the same amortization schedule for payoff. It's just we're not having to make any payments on that because they'll be using these leftover proceeds to pay off that debt.
Now, you know what the New Mexico Finance Authority will do is sell a bond. And so somewhere in the world, there's a bondholder on these remaining funds. And then, Mayor and Commissioner, I would, just something we've talked about before, ultimately, bring a new financing package to the commission for your consideration at a future meeting in order to finance the construction of the transfer station.
Any further questions for Mr. Berry or Michael F?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2018-41, approval of solid waste transfer station loan escrow.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2018-41, the approval of a solid waste transfer station loan escrow agreement. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item Y, deliberate enact on aviation agreement, or aviation grant agreement, RTN-18-03, to rehabilitate Taxiway Alpha Phase 2. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packets, you have a grant agreement from State Aviation. That is a division of the New Mexico Department of Transportation. And this grant agreement would be to provide funding for the Phase 2 of the rehabilitation of Taxiway Alpha project. Remember that last fall, we had constructed Phase 1 of Taxiway Alpha. That covered pavement rehabilitation of about one-third of the taxiway. I would anticipate that in the current phase, we'll do that second, third, and then there will be subsequently a third phase to the project. As we had talked about before, under these type of agreements, typically, State Aviation would provide 5% of the construction funding that make that engineering and construction funding. City of Raton would commit to 5% of the project funding. And then federal aviation would fund 90% of the project. So the amount that you see on the grant agreement, $41,183,000, that would also be the commitment from the City of Raton for this project. And then we would expect about $750,000 through a grant with federal aviation. That's through their AIP program. That comes at a later time. So I would expect that when we get past July 1st, we'll bring the FAA funding agreement to the commission as well as a bid package and bids for the construction.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
Make a motion to accept aviation grant agreement, RTN-18-03, to rehabilitate Taxiway A, Phase 2.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the grant agreement to rehabilitate Taxiway A. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And item Z, city manager's report. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, I'm going to limit my comments to one item tonight, so we don't carry on too long. Myself and Mr. Campbell have been participating in a discussion with stakeholders. This discussion was organized through the State Emergency Operations Center in regard to the post-fire conditions at the Yoot Park Fire. The City of Raton is involved because our supplemental water source would be diverted from the Cimarron River, which we would expect will have adverse impacts as a result of the fire. So there is a stakeholders group that is loosely assembled, that consists of federal agencies, state agencies, local agencies, a not-for-profit and private landowners. So there are actually a lot of local resources that are available. The thing that was pointed out by the EOC is that there will not be a federal bear team available for post-fire rehabilitation activities because the fire largely took place on private land, and there is just is not federal land involved. So the discussion here is in an attempt to organize really a local bear team. And a bear team, a burned area response team, their goal is to assemble people with various expertise in vegetation and erosion and all of the things that come in, water quality, things that come into play following a fire. And we'll have to call on our fellow stakeholders here to assemble that expertise. Now, the City of Raton has some knowledge of post-fire conditions from our experience with the track fire. I think that we had a lot of success, which is acknowledged by a lot of these state and federal agencies in the Lake Malloya watershed. And Mr. Campbell and myself have offered any of that to the stakeholders here. So we will be participating going forward, and I'll keep you informed of those activities and the participation. But we are at the beginning of that process. So we'll participate and we'll report back.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Are there any other comments? Commissioner Chatterley.
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
Of course. So I did, I just wanted to let the public know that we, that we did talk to Mr. Berry about our water quality and our water situation, and that we're in good shape. I didn't know if he wanted to comment on that.
I will, Commissioner. The Eagle Nest Water Cimarron River source is a supplemental source for the City of Raton. And I would state that we keep a close eye on our primary source, Lake Malloya Dam, which is in very good shape. We were approximately two feet below spillway level here recently, and we're really that low because we had actually released some water to do some maintenance work on the spillway. Otherwise, Lake Malloya would be spilling. So we're in great shape on that. Well, a lot of communities during this drought period really need to be looking seriously at water usage restrictions and maybe severe restrictions. That's not the case in Raton, but Mr. Campbell and his group do a great job of monitoring our water supply on a daily basis. We are in fine shape. We would ask the public to use water responsibly, but we do not anticipate water restrictions. And so while we anticipate some impacts from the Cimarron River, we will stay on our Lake Malloya source throughout the summer. We'll see what those impacts are and evaluate those as we get through the monsoon season. We would likely have work to do at our diversion. It's possible that at some point later in 2018 or in 2019, we would go back to the Cimarron system, but that's just not necessary for Raton currently.
And I had one other thing. I just wanted to first express our compassionate support for the residents of Cimarron and Yew Park with the, with the fire and being displaced from their homes and whatnot. And I know that we're here to support them, and I just really appreciate their courage and their example with that. And also, I definitely need to thank our community, most especially our volunteers, our businesses, and our citizens who just had an overwhelming outpouring of support over at the convention center. And I know at the fire stations, everyone was all hands on deck and at the visitor center to get supplies and get everything that was needed. That was just amazing, especially our kitchen staff, and also Linda Gallegos and Lynette Simpson, who worked with Lindy and I on helping make sure there was someone at that convention center. And also thanking our local regional fire support and the other teams that came in, along with our volunteer teams. And I know that it's, we live at a time where we have a lot of interesting weather events, and so I know it's a matter of time as we move forward. And I've already talked to Mr. Berry about our, our city emergency planning. Sometimes when our fire department, police department, who we rely on, are stretched thin with their resources, I think it's good that we have a little debrief after this event at some point, when things have settled down a little more, and talk a little bit more about the use of the convention center as a shelter and what resources we can have so that we can be prepared. And I've been encouraging people to register on the county website. If you go to their emergency planning section, they have the registration to make sure, if you don't want to create an account, you can just update your information. And so I encourage everybody to go and do that to make sure your email, your phone number is current on there, and that they can get multiple, multiple ways to contact people in event of an emergency. And I also, we're working on some 72-hour kit resources that hopefully have been, I'm wondering if we can maybe put those on the city website or just have copies at the city desk so people can be encouraged to not only volunteer in emergency, but be prepared at home. Have at least 72 hours' worth of food and those staple things, clothing and whatnot. There's lots of resources out there so that if some, an event were to happen, from where we are especially, it takes at least those three days to get solid support. So I just wanted to express that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacomel.
Ms. Chavez. Pro Tem Schuster. Well, I'm going to echo everything that Commissioner Chatterley said, and we have met after our experience at the convention center, and we've put together a cursory list of things that we could do better. I think everything went really well. We had an incredible outpouring of support from citizens that really was heartwarming, and, but, but there were a few things that we, you know, I don't think they were glaring. I think, I think we, you know, everything, everybody pulled together, and it created a really wonderful environment for those evacuees and, and, but we, there are little things that we probably could have done better, and, and I'm really proud of our community for how we pulled together and created a space for the evacuees. And I know that, you know, if something comes up before we get those little tiny things ironed out, that we'll again have that same kind of outpouring of support.
Absolutely. I just want to again say thank you to both of you for the hard work you did. I know you both spent extended hours there, so I appreciate your, your help. And Mr. Berry as well, and Mr. Phillips. Mr. Phillips was there for an extended period of time, so.
As well as Mr. Campbell and.
Mr. Campbell, well, everybody, we could go on and on and on.
We had pages and pages of people who supported and helped.
And the NRA too, for pulling in and.
Absolutely.
And our resources.
Absolutely. That's, that's who we are up in northeastern New Mexico. We're not southeastern Colorado. We're northeastern New Mexico, and that's what we do. We help each other out. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.